...the treasury, a sum sufficient to the water unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereon. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the senior center heating fuel account or take any action thereon. Article 13, sorry, Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to the DPW snow and ice account, ice and supplies account or take any action thereon. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the unemployment compensation account or take any action thereon. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to replace two sections of the roof on the Thompson Road Fire Station or take any action thereon. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient for the purpose of funding repairs and repaving the violent high school grounds, including driveways, sidewalks, and entrances, and to provide directional signage throughout the campus or take any action thereon. Okay, not hearing any, we will take all those up at the end of the meeting. We're now going to jump to Article 1, to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. It's unanimous vote. Article number 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars from the Town Report Printing and Copying Account to the Town Report Overtime Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your card. It's a unanimous vote. Also, people, if you raise your card and I don't see it, because sometimes with the lights, it's hard to see some of them, just yell out and I'll change what I said. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the Harbor Master Overtime Account to the Harbor Master Vote Maintenance Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It is unanimous vote. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Code Enforcement Director of Planning and Economic Development Salary Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twelve dollars from the Town Administrator Executive Secretary Salary Account to the Code Enforcement Director of Planning and Economic Development Salary Account.
Mr. Finnamore?
Fine, and for the lack of know, this is a new position created after the budget, uh, twenty-sixth three budget.
It is, Mr. Finnamore. Um, as you know, um, we lost our town planner slash town engineer recently. Uh, and this position, we, um, appointed an existing employee to this position recently, and this position is also budgeted for in the FY-17 budget. It is a new position, it is not additional staff.
It's a new position, but not, I don't think we can prove it, is there new positions in the middle of, uh, what is it, not be accepted?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have discussion from the Finance Committee, any further discussion on the article? We have a motion to pass over, or for more information, just pass over?
More information, so we can bring it back.
Okay, we have a motion to pass over for more information, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I, Mr. Moderator, if I could, um, and I don't want to have a conversation, but I'm just wondering, passing over for more information, so I can bring it back, what would be the additional information that you would be seeking, uh, that would change?
Mike, ma'am, would you mind using one of those mics, sorry?
There, Seetham, our mystery. Um, so what we're looking for is if these are new positions, um, the next article has to do with the same thing, um, what were the qualifications of the individuals appointed, and, uh, what was the process gone about to appoint these people? And, you know, wasn't open to, uh, job search. These were not open, we did not open them to a job, a job search. Um, with all due respect, and with regard to the qualifications, um, these are town administrator appointments, um, and that was determined, they were determined to be, uh, very qualified by myself. These appointments were, um, provided to the Board of Selectmen, they had the opportunity to avoid these appointments, they did not do that. Um, this individual particularly, um, is very schooled in the area of planning. This is her niche, this is what she does, she has a master's degree. Um, and I felt that this individual was very qualified for the position, and she'll do the town, the service to the town well.
Sir?
Uh, I would, I would write, uh, was this position in the FY-16 budget?
It was not.
Then who authorized that? What was the authorization that?
Again, the appointment was made by myself, um, I advised the Board of Selectmen of that appointment, and now I'm seeking the funding to pay for the position.
Is this person already on staff?
This person is on staff. She was the assistant planner, sir.
So she's been, she's being paid as we speak?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Penman deal School Street, uh, my question is, uh, I believe the person that left was the engineer, the town engineer?
The town planner slash engineer, correct.
So, this, uh, you would not hire a new town engineer, this person would be doing the town engineer's job?
No, actually, the town engineer's job, uh, we have several engineering firms who we have, uh, agreements with, and, um, they will be continuing to serve the town as they always did, uh, when we did have a town engineer and prior to the town engineer.
Would there be additional cost then for using the outside firms beyond what the engineer, having their own engineer would have cost?
No, no, the town engineer, the town planner slash engineer was being paid, um, ninety-three-thousand-five-hundred dollars a year, um, and our outside services related to the operating budget will not go anywhere near that for our engineering services. No, nowhere near that. Now, again, we have engineering companies who assist us with our, uh, capital, um, items, the construction, those are all budgeted within the project, but as far as the operating budget goes, no, it won't be anywhere near that amount of money.
Yes, sir. Mike Dosso, what about drive, what about the ninety-three thousand that was budgeted for 2016? Would that encompass any thirty-three hundred dollars for, you know, adding on to the employee?
This individual is not being paid anywhere near ninety-three thousand-five-hundred dollars.
So I would think that the ninety-three thousand dollars would cover any kind of increase that you're giving to the?
They're two separate budgets, sir. This individual is budgeted for in the Code Enforcement Budget, the town engineer planner was, uh, budgeted in the engineering budget. Two separate budgets.
So, obviously, it's a big savings with the ninety-three thousand that we didn't have to pay out. Is it going to be dispersed to some other department?
Uh, not right now, there is no intent to, uh, transfer that money, but if at the end of the year, or at the June 6th special town meeting, if there are other liabilities that need to be covered, that is one place that we could, we could take it from, within the operating budget. This is just, I chose not to use that account, I chose to use, again, there are excess funds available in the Town Administrator Executive Secretary Salary Account, because that position is vacant and has been all fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion, miss?
Can I ask, Mr. Moderator, if there's a provision in the Bible that we can start in the middle of the, uh, without a, uh, early town meeting?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not aware of any such a provision, uh, sir, and, uh, that, that therefore does not conclude town meeting or voting on it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to pass over for more information? All right, not hearing any further discussion on the motion to pass over, we're just voting on the motion to pass over for more, for more information. All those in favor of passing over for more information, please raise your cards. Can you, gentlemen, please come? Okay, you can raise your cards, gentlemen. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion is twenty-four to thirty-nine, the motion fails. So now we're back to the original, original article. Is there any further discussion on the original article? Hearing no further discussion on the original article, all those in favor of passing the original article as read, please raise your cards. Can you guys count, please, again? All those opposed, please raise your cards. Counters, please come. It's forty-four to twenty-eight, the motion passes, I mean, the, uh, the article passes. Article number eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available sum, funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Health Services Health Agent Salary Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars from the Town Administrator Executive Secretary Salary Account to the Health Services Health Agent Salary Account.
Mr. Moderator, you moved to pass over that, uh, the same article?
We have a motion and a second, we have a motion from Mr. Finnamore to pass over for more information for the same reasons last time. Is there a second on the motion to pass over? Have a motion and a second to pass over, is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is this a, a new position, why is there not money in the budget already for this?
This is replacing the former health agent that left us a couple of years ago. Uh, this individual was the, um, administrative staff in the office. Uh, she became a health inspector back when the former health agent was here, and began the process of educating herself, um, so that she could then at some point fill the role of the health agent. She has done that, she has done that on her own. She, if you have had any, any, um, interaction with our Code Enforcement Team, um, this individual is part of that team, she does a wonderful job. This particular position, again, this is an individual that worked for the town, promoted to this position. The administrative staff in the Code Enforcement Office has also been replaced, that is a union position, so that, that was replaced also. So that, if you see the difference in the, in the funds that are required, that is the difference in the funds.
Any additional discussion on the motion to pass over for more information? Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor of passing over for more information, please raise your cards. Thank you, all those opposed, please raise your cards. It is ten-four fifty-three against, the motion fails, we're back to the original article. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of passing Article 8 as amended by the Town Administrator, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. Eleven against, the motion passes. I'm sorry, the article passes. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Elections Election Workers Account or take any action thereon. Have a motion to pass over the article, do we have any discussion? I'm sorry, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six-thousand dollars to the Elections Election Workers Account as follows. Three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars from the Town Administrator Executive Secretary Salary Account, two-thousand-two-hundred dollars from the Finance Committee Reserve.
Ma'am, we have a motion to pass over?
Oh, I have one, yes.
That's okay, hold on, one second.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Finnamore?
I don't believe it's an unanticipated expense and can't license to reserve account from the Finance Board, but I'll bring it into the Finance Board, check it for the moderator, please.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, through you in response to the question for Mr. Finnamore, it's my opinion that the decision about whether it is an unanticipated emergency may rest with the Town Administrator and need not be vetted by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion on the motion to pass over for more information?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, um, the definition of a transfer from the Reserve Fund is extraordinary unforeseen. These are the funds that are required in order for us to hold the special election on Wednesday, May eighteenth, and that in and of itself being a special election, uh, was unforeseen in the budget this year.
Any further discussion on the motion to pass over for, for more information? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to pass over, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Fifty-two against and eight for, the motion fails, we're now back to the original article. I need a motion.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six-thousand dollars to the Elections Election Workers Account as follows. Three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars from the Town Administrator Executive Secretary Salary Account, two-thousand-two-hundred dollars from the Finance Committee Reserve.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Six against, six against if the motion passes. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Elections Printing and Copying Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of eighteen-hundred dollars from the Finance Committee Reserve Funds to the Elections Printing and Copying Account.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, the same explanation, these are funds that are required for the special election on Wednesday, May eighteenth.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm Whitelaw, once again, at the Prop two-and-a-half, uh, informational meeting, uh, question was asked as far as how much elections cost, quarter five thousand. We're a little bit above that, is there any reason?
Mr. Whitelaw, we, we looked again, um, at the expenses related to previous elections this year, and with salaries that go up, hourly rates and things like that, has been an increase in what it costs us to hold an election.
In two weeks.
I'm sorry?
In two weeks.
Uh, no, the, the five thousand dollars that I estimated for you, which was an estimate, and I believe I stated that, um, was when we had looked at it previous. In order to make sure, make certain that we cover our expenses, I looked at it in more detail.
And one last question, did, did they add numbers up, right, the FIC, FICOM Reserve Account is gone at this point, if this passes?
That is correct, um, I did, I did, um, in the spirit of adding additional information for people in the guide, I provide the balances now in these accounts that we're seeking to be transferred from.
Which is good, but if they need money between now and, you know, the year, what do they do?
Again, if, this is the end of the fiscal year, so there are other avenues available to us, that being the June 6th special town meeting, where this body can do transfers from within the budget. Does it require FICOM Reserve? Also, uh, the law states that in the last fifteen days of, I'm sorry, from May first till July fifteenth, um, the Board of Selectmen, with the approval of the Finance Committee, is allowed to also make transfers similar to what town meeting has the ability to do. So we have other options available to us.
Any additional discussion on the article? Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor of, there was no more, sorry, uh, all those in favor of passing the article, please raise your cards. All those opposed to passing the article, please raise your cards. Eight against, the motion passes, or the article passes, sorry. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Senior Center Electricity Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of ten-thousand dollars from the Town Council Legal Services Account to the Senior Center Electricity Account.
Have a motion and discuss, second, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, we have to go for that, is around to you, like, know if there's an extra net for the future or that's typical?
That has been calculated, uh, through the fiscal year, Mr. Finnamore. Based on expenses to date.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Penman deal School Street, just curious how we got so far behind in the Senior Center Electricity Account?
Ms. Man deal, as you know, um, this year is the first year that the Senior Center is in their new location, their new facility. We really had no idea what it was going to cost us this fiscal year, so we had level funded their electricity account for fiscal sixteen. Now we know, because they've been in there for almost the whole fiscal year, so, and, and, and this increase has also been taken into account in the FY-17 proposed budget.
Any additional discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Keith, um, Third Street, Webster, can I just confirm, is this money, uh, does this include the School Street Electricity Account? The Senior Center School Street Electricity Account, so it's both buildings? Yes, okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor, passing the article, please raise your card. All those opposed to passing the article, please raise your card. It's unanimous vote. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, a sum sufficient to the Senior Center Telephone Account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of two-thousand dollars from the Town Council Legal Services Account to the Senior Center Telephone Account.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, again, is that an anticipated expense at the end of the year or that?
It is, Mr. Finnamore, through, it's been calculated, an estimate through the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional discussion? Hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor of passing the article, please raise your card. All those opposed to passing the article, please raise your card. It is unanimous vote. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds in the treasury, the sum of three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for the purpose of a CBR, crash data retrieval, DLC base kit with software or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three-hundred dollars from the Data Processing Computer Equipment Account to the Police Capital Outlay Account for the purpose set forth in the article.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Is that what they have drawn, three-hundred dollars?
It is, Mr. Finnamore, um, if I may, if you are a regular attendee of town meeting, you have seen this article before. Um, unfortunately, we haven't been able to fund this, the price has gone up. Um, and this, uh, year, our police cruiser account has an excess balance in it of three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars. Um, so all that is required is an additional three-hundred dollars in order for the police department to purchase this very critical piece of equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional discussion on the article? Okay, hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor of passing the article, please raise your card. All those opposed to passing the article, please raise your card. It is unanimous vote. Okay, if you came in late, um, several articles are being passed over for more inform, sorry, for more information. I'm gonna read those articles again, if anybody wants them held, just yell out what number you want held, otherwise, we'll take one motion to pass them all over. Those are Articles two, three, four, twelve, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Okay, not hearing anyone requesting any of those articles be held, I'll take a motion to pass all of those articles over together. Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Pass, pass over for more information, Mr.?
One question, the seventy-five thousand dollars, um, what does that entail for DPW snow and ice supply account?
If I may, just to be clear, is your motion to pass over for more information, Mr. Finnamore?
Yes.
Yes, okay, um, just if I could, uh, by way of explanation, all of these articles that the recommendation is to pass over for more information, they will show up again on the June 6th special town meeting. It's timing at this point, uh, for funds to be available, we want to get closer to the end of the fiscal year to see, uh, where we actually are. The seventy-five thousand dollars is the part of the snow and ice deficit in the DPW. We are required every year, we're part of a collective purchasing agreement, we're required to purchase a certain amount of the product that we bid collectively for, and most of that is reflected in here.
So we must definitely underestimate what we're gonna be spending this year, because we have a very mild effort.
Well, Mr. Dosso, what we do is we level funds, snow and ice, in three different accounts every year. The total appropriation between the three accounts is one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. By state statute, in order to be able to over-expend those accounts, you have to at least appropriate, at the minimum, what you appropriated in the previous fiscal year. So we do not, and have not, I've been here almost sixteen years, we've never increased that number, because then we would because then we would have to appropriate it again in the following fiscal year in order to be eligible to over, overspend these accounts.
Any additional discussion?
I'm curious as to why we would be passing over, uh, the unpaid bills. Are we not required to pay the unpaid bills, whatever they are? Why pass them over at this point?
Again, Ms. Mandiel, we're waiting until, um, June sixth. There's a couple of bills that we don't have. Um, we need to secure copies of them, so that I can provide those to town meeting.
Aren't these unpaid bills from a prior year?
They are.
And so at the end of this fiscal year, we still don't have bills from the prior fiscal year?
And, and, uh, I think that one of them is actually from a year before that.
Any additional discussion? Yes, sir.
And there are no amounts that you can provide on any of these? As far as what, what kind of dollars may be involved?
Again, these same articles are gonna show up on the June sixth special town meeting.
If this didn't, if this doesn't pass tonight, what happens? Someone didn't, someone's not prepared? I guess that's my question. Doesn't seem like someone's prepared to provide information as far as what these things will cost.
Well, actually, being prepared is recommending that we're going to put them on the June sixth, so that is the preparation.
And is that, are we gonna get the information as residents the night of June sixth, as far as exactly how this is gonna, how we're gonna be paid for these?
Are you asking for the guide to be posted earlier than that, on, on the town meeting, on the town website? That could make the...
Yes, I guess, it, it's a little, it's a little bit challenging for anyone to walk in here tonight, get, and see these numbers for the first time, and make any kind of intelligent decision as far as whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, or whether to support it or not. And it seems a lack of information that continues to come. How we just gonna push it off to June? When is this information gonna be made available?
Mr. Whitelaw, just to be clear, all of the actions that town meetings took tonight do not affect, they're not an increase in a budget. All they are are reallocation of budget resources. That's all they are. None of these articles are appropriating any additional funds or anything like that.
Article eighteen is not.
In Article eighteen, the recommendation is to pass over for more information.
But again, could... I guess you can tap dance, but when is, when are the dollar amounts gonna be made available? If, if we didn't know tonight coming in here as far as what it was gonna cost, say, for Article eighteen, or Article seventeen, when is that information gonna be made available?
Again...
Before June sixth.
If we are, if we're going to ask you to vote on something, we will make sure that the information is available to you. We will make sure.
Wasn't available tonight, so we walked in. Mr. Moderator?
Hold on, hold on, one second. Just if I could answer the, the questions that the gentleman just had a minute ago about, um, what happens if they don't, um... Town council advised earlier that the Board of Selectmen can vote to remove anything, any of the budget items from the article prior to town meeting, but that this, I guess the decision was made to allow town meeting to make those decisions, so... Just to give you a little more information on that. Yes, ma'am?
Just to build on what Mr. Whitelaw was saying, I think there's a lot of concern about the way the meetings are being scheduled this year. We're, we're not, we're not voting on the majority of the money articles on the special. We're gonna, your recommendation is to not vote the annual at all until after the May eighteenth election.
Correct.
We don't have a water rate set, we don't have a sewer rate set, and we're gonna hold a special election and ask people to vote on spending another million dollars when we haven't passed a budget and we don't know what our, our water and sewer rates are. And it's concerning to some of us that we are, we seem to be handling these things in a bad fashion. We don't know what our total package is gonna be, and yet we're going to the coals and asking people to vote for a million dollars worth of additional taxes. There's a lot of people that are concerned about that.
Well, um, Ms. Mandiel, I do believe that, um, information that has been, been, being disseminated is more than has been in former years or previous years. I can say that for a fact. Um, the budget was balanced, um, earlier than it ever has been in my tenure here. Um, it was released and public hearings were held and discussion was had on that. Um, again, it is our recommendation to hold off on, on the budget, on acting on the budget, until we know what, if anything, of the override passes. I just think that that is the right way to do things.
Okay. Is the budget online for us to have a look at?
It, yes, it is, actually. I apologize. It is online. If you go to the Town Administrator's page, the budget is there.
Don't we normally get into the budget when we walk into the annual town meeting?
Again, the recommendation is not to address any of the articles on the annual...
I understand you don't wanna vote on the budget, but normally when we go to the town meeting, there is a budget sitting on the table for us to look at. So you're, you're asking every one of these people to go on their computer and find that budget and print it out for themselves at home? I, I'm just, a lot of people are concerned about that.
Mr. Moderator, first, please.
Right, just a moment.
Ms. Mandiel, and the rest of you.
Mr. Finnamore, can you use the mic? Can you use the mic?
We have an incomplete budget. What we have is the budget for general fund. We don't have the enterprise accounts. Without the enterprise account, we're violation of the charter. And not be a violation of the charter, they have postponed meeting. They have no other choice. So, we didn't get a, at, at finance, uh, Friday night at ten o'clock, Miss LeBeau supplied us with the figures for the special and the general warrant, uh, which gave us only tonight, oh, again. Anybody who could sit, the twenty-fourth, Tuesday the twenty-fourth, at five P.M., at the Ivy Martel Room, we were spending hours on budget, the enterprise account, and the warrant articles. That'd be Tuesday the twenty-fourth, one day after the rates are set. We'll be taking it up with, with the town accountant, T.A.
Any additional discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of passing over for more information, all of the articles, two, three, four, twelve, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It is unanimous vote.
Moderator, dissolve the special. Over to the board.
I have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. I have a motion to the second. All those in favor...
Aye.
All opposed.
Guys have it. Thank you. The annual convene at seven P.M. All right. Good evening, everybody, again. It being seven o'clock, we're going to now start the annual town meetings. At this time, I would again ask the Chairman and Board of Selectmen to give us an affirmative agreement. If you came in, um, late and missed the beginning, opening of the special, I'll repeat my instructions. Uh, based upon the rules that were adopted last year at town meeting, there'll be seven speakers for the article, seven of speakers against. The first speaker gets five minutes on both sides, and each of the remaining six on each side gets two minutes. From there, when you approach the mic, please, um, use the mic and state your name and your address. At this time, I've asked the town clerk to inform you that the article was posted in the journal.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Webster, who are qualified to vote elections in town debates, to meet in Butler High School Auditorium, fifty-two Lake Parkway, in said Webster, on Monday, May ninth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven P.M., then and there, to act on the following articles to wit. Article one, uh, moderator, expense for the reading warrant.
I have a motion to the second, expense for the reading of the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed. It is unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on, hold on, don't, don't get ahead of me there. Um, again, just like the, the special, I'm gonna take a motion, I'm gonna make a motion at this time to allow all non-department, uh, downtown resident department heads, downtown resident town administrator, downtown resident town council, to address you, uh, at town meeting when required. All those in favor of that article, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It is unanimous vote. Board of directors, ma'am, now go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we, we immediately adjourn the annual town meeting to Monday, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M., here in the Butler High School Auditorium.
I have a motion in the second to adjourn all the articles in this town meeting to June sixth at seven P.M. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, Whitelaw, I would direct, same question. Uh, maybe someone can inter it this time. When will we get the numbers?
Again, Mr. Whitelaw, the, the, um, balanced, uh, budget, operating budget, proposed operating budget for fiscal seventeen has been available for some time now. Um, as you know, we have a potential override, special election on May eighteenth. Once we know the results of that election, any adjustments to the budget will be made, and that document will be available immediately after that.
What about the articles? And I guess I would direct this to the selectmen. They've approved passage of these articles without any dollar bills. I'd love to hear an explanation on that happens.
We are planning on doing a presentation to town meeting on the article relating to the water treatment plant.
It's not just the water treatment plan. Uh, there, there are many of the articles, both in the special town meeting and this particular town meeting, that have Selectmen recommend approval with no dollar amounts.
What additional information are you looking for, Mr. Whitelaw? Article nine is also an article, um, that is, is, uh, subject to, um, the override, that article...
Article five.
Correct. And that information will be made available very soon.
But again, I, I, I guess to, maybe to the Chairman of the Selectmen, how do you, how can you do the process? How do you recommend approval without numbers?
Again...
Can I interject a little bit? Actually, I'm, sorry. I'm gonna interject. Um, one of the few times I can, I guess. I don't know if this clarifies your question, Mr. Whitelaw. Um, and maybe I'm off base on hearing what you're asking. But when they put, they don't put any numbers in the warrant article. It's basically for convenience of town meeting, because the, the, the law requires the town to give a warning to the residents of what would be, in a general fashion, of what would be on, uh, uh, be discussed at town meeting. So if they were to just put in a number, let's say, a hundred, uh, a million dollars for a fire truck, and then somebody came in and made a motion to amend that to one point five million dollars, then it would be on me to rule that out of order, that it would not be, um, reasonable for people who read the warrant seeing a million dollars to think that one point five million would be expended. So without a number on there, it allows more flexibility at the town meeting level.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the flexibility. However, it's really hard to go to a, a Prop two and a half override when the town's asking specifically for a million dollars without any other information as far as what the total budget includes.
That information has been, has been available for, for some time now, Mr. Whitelaw.
The budget is, but not, not these articles. The articles do not have any money attached to them. We, we just pass the whole bunch over for follow-up for more information. Again, I go back to Article five. There's no money attached. Is that gonna increase taxes or not?
No, it is not, sir. The, the, again, so the general fund budget has, has been available for some time. Sewer and water enterprise funds, it would be irresponsible of me to put out any numbers until the Board of Selectmen adopt the utility rates.
They've already approved it. They, the Selectmen have approved many of these articles.
They recommend approval for putting these articles and including them on the warrant.
But not the money.
Correct. And it would be irresponsible to, to recommend a number that we don't know what that number is yet. Until I have the revenues available to fund a budget, I can't estimate a budget. That's irresponsible.
Well, I...
No, it is irresponsible, sir. As far as South Worcester County Communications Center, um, that is our, our, um, regional dispatch center, and this does not affect the general fund budget other than the assessment that is required and is budgeted for, on the revenue side, on, as a decrease on, on, in the budget. And that is already reflected in the general fund operating budget that has been available for several weeks now.
And I've, I've, I've reviewed that many times trying to figure some of the documents out, and this isn't the forum for that. All right, but I, I think you folks have done a great job with providing information for the override. Well, the school department and the town has done a good job as far as providing that information, and exactly what it's gonna do as far as the tax rate is concerned. If that same concept could be applied to the budget, if that same concept could be applied to the articles, I think everyone would be in happy camp, and I think when you, when you come into tonight's budget, and from the water and sewer not being available, tonight didn't sneak up on me.
Now, let me be clear about the general fund...
Can I, can I interrupt just for one second? You guys have been having a nice discussion, a little bit organized. People waiting this night. Mr. Whitelaw, if you could just hold on for a minute?
I, I just think you...
No, just, you can... Just, you can come back in one second. Let me just see what the other side wants to say. Go ahead, ma'am.
I was wondering why the water and sewer rates have not yet been set. Previous years, I'm sure they've been set by this time, and I'm wondering if there's something that we don't know as to why we haven't set those rates yet.
That is actually not the case. If you look back, you will see that it's about this time of year that we have set them. In some cases, it may have been as late as June.
Is there something that we don't know as to...
There is not.
Do we know what the expense side is for that water and sewer?
As I said, it would be irresponsible of me to put forth a budget without knowing what my revenues are first. That's your first, that's the first piece of putting together a municipal budget. You have to know what your revenues are first, you have to know what's available in order for you to spend. So again, until the board of selectmen sets those rates, which is scheduled for May twenty-third, and please attend, hear the presentation, I can honestly say that the presentation that I put together several years ago is much more comprehensive than ever. It explains everything. If there's any questions to be answered or asked, I will answer them that evening. I make a presentation, I provide the board of selectmen with several options, several scenarios, they choose which option to go with. Once they've approved that, then I will release the operating budget, the estimated operating budget, to the public.
Yes, sir.
Yes. As Ms. LeBout said, the budget has been approved by the financial board of White Harbor. It's a balanced budget, and I'd like everybody to know that the Southern Wester County Communication Center has a zero operating expense both in the budget and on the warrant article.
In, just to make sure we're clear, in the general fund operating budget, as I have explained, the regional dispatch center is going to be accounted for as a special revenue fund. Therefore, those amounts of money that need to be appropriated out of the general fund are reflected on the revenue side of the budget as a decrease.
Mr. Whitelaw, would you like to come back up? There's no one. You sure? Because I know somebody wanted to hear the answer to your question, because they shouted it out up here when you asked it, but... Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion on the article to pass, on all of these articles to pass over? I'm sorry, to adjourn till June sixth at seven p.m. here at Butler High School.
Make the motion.
Got the motion. Okay, all those in favor of adjuring till June sixth at seven p.m. for the annual town meeting, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Five against, all the rest in favor. The motion passes, we will reconvene here on June sixth at seven p.m. Thank you, gentlemen.